Things that you've given us, we ask our special blessing and protection for those military who are providing for our security of our nation. We ask for a blessing for our police who are providing the security for our freedoms, and we ask that you grant us your peace, which passes all understanding. And Father, we ask that you be with us all as we consider the items that are here this evening, and we pray for those people in Virginia who lost loved ones, both police and the individuals, and ask that you help them and their families in this time of turmoil. We ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Commissioner Perigien will lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Perigien?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
We have awards and recognitions, Mr. Fibo.
We do, Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to announce that this year's winner of the Safe Department of the Year is Park and Rec.
Parks and Rec. All right.
There'll be a quick plaque receiving and giving, but I'd like to mention a couple cogent things. They had zero lost days in one year. It's pretty amazing. They have about 300 people who drive vehicles and almost 220,000 miles, and only occurred $3,971 in lost accident damages to vehicles. I thought that was pretty amazing. So I'd like to acknowledge Brent Belcher, the head of the department, and all his employees, and I think Safety Dave Wisebrode's gonna come up and hand him a plaque.
Safety Dave, come on up.
Crick and grin.
Let's figure out where you're gonna do it. Should've started this dance earlier. Go ahead. Turn to the crowd.
Crick and grin. All right.
All right, Commissioner Nash has an announcement for you?
Yeah, if I could, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. On Saturday, August 26th, at 8:30, from 8:30 until 3:00 p.m., which, again, is a Saturday, and it's all day, but it's a worthwhile workshop. The Presbyterian Church of Bowling Green is putting on and hosting a civility training. So there is a national organization called the Institute for Civility in Government, and the Presbyterian Church has contracted with them. It is open to the public, so anybody who wants to attend, there is a $25 fee to attend. Lunch is included in that $25 fee, and there is childcare, which, thanks to the church for that opportunity, there is childcare that's involved at only $5 per child for the entire time that the civility training's going on. So I encourage people to attend. I plan to be there myself.
I think, is anyone else?
Joe's got a call.
He's been waiting for one, I understand. All right. I think I misspoke to one of the attorneys. I told you there was not a public hearing tonight, but there is, and we have that for the purpose of the public hearing is to review the proposed use of municipal aid program, liquid fuel tax funds, and coal severance and processing tax and mineral severance tax funds. Mr. Fibo?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Melissa Kanzler will be holding and managing the public hearing tonight. Melissa?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me to conduct this hearing. It's an annual public hearing where we share with you guys and the public on how we intend to use our municipal aid and coal and mineral revenue from the state of Kentucky. A little background, our municipal aid funds, what we call liquid fuel tax, LFT for short, are basically taxes on every gallon of gas sold in the state of Kentucky. Cities like Bowling Green qualify to gain that revenue source from the state, and basically we're required to spend that and put back into our roadway network for improvements. Every year, we start with a fund balance. At the beginning of FY '18, our fund balance was $1,558,562. We have a projected revenue along with transfers from the general fund, $2,779,000. And our expenditures, typically every year, we propose to spend that money primarily on our overlay program or our resurfacing program. This year, we're planning to, proposing to spend $2.35 million to pave our city streets, and then another $100,000 for our sidewalk reconstruction program. With that in mind, we'd have a projected ending balance of $1,887,562. Now, I've provided in your packets a preliminary list of streets totaling approximately 22 and 1/2 miles of streets to be paved in FY '18. This, again, is preliminary. The utility companies are going through that list right now. Every year, we coordinate with those folks, primarily Atmas and BGMU, who often have large projects that could impact the roads. So we want to make sure they don't have anything proposed before we come in and pave those streets. We do not, the 22 and 1/2 miles of streets is our estimate based on our last contract. And of course, our last contract omitted the prevailing wage requirement, so thus more streets. Hopeful to see the same prices or even lower this year, but we use those from our last contract. The only, the price of asphalt isn't the only factor in determining how many miles we can pave. We have included a modest amount of rehab, what we call full-depth rehabilitation. Some of that is underneath the streets that we're planning to pave, some bad spots, old street cuts, and things that need to be rehabbed. And then we've also identified some other areas outside of these streets to do the same. Additionally, we have a federal requirement to upgrade any handicap ramps along the streets that we pave to bring them into compliance. So if my memory's correct, there's approximately 50 ramps with this contract to upgrade either with the slopes, or if there's not one there today, we'll add one with this project. Additionally, proposed expenditures is our $100,000 for our sidewalk reconstruction program. This is not to be confused with our sidewalk program, which is new sidewalk. We are proposing to utilize this money along with recent years' funding for the Butler Way project. Butler Way extends, sidewalk extends from College View sidewalk that we just, a few years back, completed to the back property of Dishman McGinnis School. The property, or the sidewalk along Butler Way is, it was not simply spot repairs, it's a complete sidewalk rehab. So it did require multiple years' funding, and we're hopeful to get that underway this year with this additional $100,000. The second tax revenue that we receive from the state is the coal and mineral severance tax. This tax is collected from coal and mineral haulers throughout the state of Kentucky, and due to the presence in Warren County, the city does receive some funding from this source. And again, we are to apply those to transportation-related needs. The revenue is anticipated to be $30,000 this year. We currently have a fund balance of, let me see here, $74,864. So if you assume $30,000 revenue this year, that leaves us with a fund balance of $104,864. Typically, and in recent years, we have not proposed a specific project for this money. We typically use this for roadway safety improvements as they arise, sidewalk safety improvements that are needed out there. And in the event that we have another bad winter, like we did a couple of years ago, we can use it for any de-ice or needs, if they are above and beyond what we have on hand. With that in mind, that's the two revenue sources that we receive each year from the state. Again, you have the preliminary list of streets for FY '18 paving contract. It's out to bid right now. We hope to have that back and before you in September for award, so we can get rolling on that.
Can the public see which streets are gonna be paved when, like on a website, or?
With FY '18, yes, once it's approved by you and that list is finalized, we will post that on our homepage. We're hopeful to have a map along with that this time to help them zoom in, zoom out. They can see, you know, how they're spread out. It also helps our contractors get around. But yes, we'll have that once it's finalized and approved and underway, for sure. And the current contract, the last FY '17 contract, is wrapping up also, by the way. We have maybe two streets left on that that's left to be paved, and we will close that contract out.
Lot of streets, very impressive.
It is a lot of streets. We're making good headway. I think putting our focus on this is a great idea. I think it's evident to me, as a citizen, the impact that we've had by paving and spending more money on our overlay projects. And with the extra money, we can also identify some of the, what we call bad spots in roads that aren't being paved. Maybe the road's in good shape, it doesn't need to be paved, but there's multiple old cuts that we need to address. We plan to do a little bit more of that this year, too.
Thank you for being cognizant of the street cuts. I hate street cuts.
Y'all do. Any other questions?
Any other comments or questions for Ms. Kanzler? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public with regard to municipal aid road funds? Hearing now, and the public hearing is now closed. Mr. DeFebbo, you have comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to enter a late file.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by me, second by Perigien. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
No.
Perigien?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Comments, sir?
No other comments, Mayor.
It'll be added to the end of the agenda. Approval amendments for the regular meeting on August 1st, 2017.
So moved.
Motion by Williams, second by Dunning. And if there's any additions, deletions, or corrections, please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Out of respect for the capacity card in the room, we're gonna move item number six to the front.
Municipal order number 2017-150, municipal order approving the promotions of Douglas R. Morris Jr. to the position of Assistant Fire Chief, Caleb P. Hulsey to the position of Company Commander EMT, and T. Andrew Crawford to the position of Fire Apparatus Operator EMT in the Fire Department.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. Mr. Fibo?
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask Jason, Chief Jason Coulson, to come forward to put his nominations before the commission. Jason?
First off, thank you for moving us up. We appreciate the appearance of our firefighters, hopefully demonstrating support of these promotions as well. But Mayor Commissioners, I'm honored to be here this evening, presenting recommendations of promotion for three positions within the Fire Department, Assistant Chief of Suppression, Company Commander, and also Fire Apparatus Operator. These promotional opportunities were created by the recent retirement of Assistant Chief Greg Elrod. The promotional testing for these positions took place in the fall of last year. If you will allow me, I'd like to begin with the Assistant Chief of Suppression position. For this particular position, three members in our organization completed the promotional testing process, which had a written exam and various assessment center exercises. Based on the results of the promotional testing and his performance throughout his career, I'm here to recommend Doug Morris for promotion to Assistant Chief of Suppression. I'll get Doug to stand while I try and say some nice things about him. Doug is originally from Morgantown and was hired by the city back in 2004. He promoted to Fire Apparatus Operator in 2009, and has been serving as a Company Commander for our organization since 2013. During his 14 years with the department, Doug has remained engaged and worked very hard to prepare himself for this opportunity. Doug has completed his Associate's Degree in Paramedicine through Western Kentucky University. And in addition to the basic courses and certifications that we typically challenge members to complete, he additionally has completed Fire Officer One. He is a credentialed Incident Safety Officer. He's a Certified Fire Instructor, and as I mentioned earlier, he is a paramedic. He's attended advanced courses through both the Alabama Fire College and the Ohio Fire Academy. He's been very instrumental in our Honor Guard and serving in those capacities. And he also represented us as a part of the Bowling Green Fire Department Relief Team back during Hurricane Katrina, so he spent about a month assisting victims of that event. So joining Doug this evening are his wife Jill, his son Samuel, daughter Ray, and other family members. Doug maintains a calm demeanor and consistently demonstrates leadership qualities. And with that, Mayor and Commission, I am pleased to recommend Doug for promotion to Assistant Chief of the Fire Department. Next, for the position of Company Commander, we had seven members that met eligibility requirements and completed the promotional testing process. This evening, it's my honor to recommend Caleb Hulsey for promotion to Company Commander. Get Caleb to stand. Caleb, Caleb's originally from Hopkinsville and was hired by the city in 2005. Prior to joining the department, Caleb served as a firefighter for the National Guard for two years. He continued to serve for another four years after coming to work for the city of Bowling Green. Caleb was promoted to Fire Apparatus Operator in 2010. Caleb, like Doug, I believe, has remained engaged throughout his 12-year career. He has served on various committees. He's completed 60 hours of college education, and additionally, has taken supervisory classes through the Western Kentucky University Career and Workforce Development Program. In addition to the basic firefighting courses recognized by our department, he has also completed his Emergency Medical Technician Certification. He's taken advanced classes certifying or credentialing him as an Aircraft Rescue Firefighter, an Apparatus Driver Operator. He's also a Fire Inspector, Instructor, a Rope Rescue Technician, and also is one of our structural collapse technicians. Joining Caleb this evening are his wife Renee, his two boys Corbin and James, and one of his two daughters Avery. Additionally, I wanted to recognize Caleb's father, retired Hopkinsville Fire Department Battalion Chief Larry Hulsey, so firefighting is in his background there. Caleb has displayed knowledge, dedication, and a professional work ethic, and therefore I am pleased to recommend him for promotion to Company Commander of the Bowling Green Fire Department.
Now, Jill.
Caleb, you got two, you know?
Two from you. And last but not least, I'd like to recommend a promotion for Fire Apparatus Operator. Seventeen members met eligibility requirements and completed the promotional testing, which included a written exam and various scenarios to measure their ability to operate a fire apparatus. Based on the results of the promotional testing and likewise his performance, I'm here to recommend Andy Crawford for promotion to Fire Apparatus Operator. Andy, you'll stand for me. Andy's originally from Glasgow and is a 2006 graduate of Western Kentucky University with a Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration. We were fortunate to hire him four years later in 2010. Andy has worked diligently to complete courses and earned certifications as a firefighter. Additionally, as an Aircraft Rescue Firefighter, he is also an Emergency Medical Technician. He has completed his courses for Fire Inspector, for Fire Instructor, and has also completed certifications as Apparatus Driver Operator. Joining Andy tonight are his wife Amanda and his two boys Reed and Oliver. Andy's work ethic is beyond reproach and is displayed by his desire to be at work early, his attention to detail, and a demonstrated willingness to learn. He is fully capable of performing the duties of this position, and it is my honor to recommend him for promotion to Fire Apparatus Operator.
Any comments or questions? Motions on the floor, any other comments? Thank you, Jason. Good job. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations to all of you, and you are welcome to stay and watch, but I know you've got your working forms on, so feel free to step out if you like. Next item is ordinance BG 2017-36, second reading.
Ordinance Amending Code of Ordinances, ordinance amending Chapter 15, Business and General Regulations of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to Make Revisions to Subchapter 15-6, Storage, Sale, and Use of Fireworks Related to Educational Requirements and Enforcement.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Williams, second by Nash. Any other comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigien?
No.
Wilkerson?
No.
Did you, I'll give you a chance to correct your vote if you were thinking something different.
Your Honor, I want to correct my vote.
A no vote means that everything stays the same, that we're not making any alterations to the fireworks ordinance.
That is the total vote, no.
No. Make that notation, please.
Huh? I was a yes.
Okay, so you...
These firecrackers, you know, I hope we never, ever have to have this discussion again pertaining to firecrackers. So what is the vote? What do I want to vote? We're not making any changes.
The vote, the yes vote means we're making no changes to the ordinance.
If you never want to talk about it again...
Excuse me, excuse me. I said they're wrong. A yes vote is meaning you are making changes to the ordinance, and no vote means everything stays the same.
You just voted differently than you did the last meeting.
Well, I want to vote the same way I did the last meeting. What was that?
Now, if you want to, if you want to make sure this isn't talked about again, your better shot of that happening is to vote yes.
Yes.
Because it's gonna be talked about.
I know. I've heard it for 24 years.
Okay, so, I mean, what is your actual vote? Are you voting in favor of changes to the ordinance or voting against changes to the ordinance?
I'm voting against.
Thank you.
That is as a no. Three no's and two yeses. Same as last time.
Yes.
Sorry for the confusion, Joe. I apologize. All right, second reading of ordinance BG 2017-37.
Ordinance Amending Code of Ordinances, ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to Comply with Amended Statutory Changes Related to Code Enforcement.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Perigien, second by Nash. This is the second reading of administrative changes to the Chapter 2. Is there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-38.
Ordinance Resoning Real Estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.83 acre from highway business to light industrial located on a portion of 125 Hunter Court, presently owned by 125 Hunter LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Perigien. This is the second reading of an ordinance with unanimous vote for planning and zoning. Is there any further discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-39.
Ordinance Resoning Real Estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 89.94 acres from agriculture to RM4 multifamily residential and HB highway business located at 495 Lover's Lane, presently owned by Chandler Residential LLC, The Medical Center, and American Bank and Trust.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Williams. It's the second reading of an ordinance with one abstention. The rest were yes votes for planning and zoning. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-40.
Ordinance Annexing Property By Consent, ordinance annexing 3.12 acres of property located at 7288 Louisville Road, presently owned by Newcom Oil Company LLC, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
So moved.
Moved. Motion by Perigien, second by Nash. Again, a second reading of a voluntary annexation on Louisville Road. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Municipal order 2017-151.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Catherine P. Maroney to the position of Cemetery Division Manager in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigien, second by Williams. Mr. Fibo?
Thank you, Mayor. With the retirement of Beverly Fleener, we felt it important to look at the Cemetery Division and effectuate a restructuring. We're here tonight to put the first incumbent in the restructured Cemetery Division Manager, and I would ask Brent Belcher to come forward and put his promotion before the commission. Brent?
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate it, Mr. Fibo. Come for you tonight, obviously a recommendation for the Cemetery Division Manager position. As Mr. Fibo mentioned, we've been vacant since January of this year. One of the great things about our Parks Department is the amount of attention and, I guess, love that the public has for our parks. A lot of people may not know that the Cemetery Division is part of Parks and Recreation. We obviously oversee Fairview, which is actually two cemeteries, Fairview 1 and 2. We oversee Mount Maria Cemetery, Pioneer Cemetery, and the most recent would be the Coventon Family Cemetery.
Goat Farm.
That's where we have the goats yearly. With those, with the Cemetery Division, it is with, it's one of those things the public takes great pride in. We know that the esteem the public has for our Cemetery Division and for Fairview Cemetery and other cemeteries within our city, and we take great pride with that. It is a, it is, we're kind of a, we have a standard, a standard set by ourselves and a standard to meet for our public, and we take that with great pride. With that said, I bring to you tonight Kathy Maroney. Kathy has, she has been with us since 2011, us being Bowling Green Parks and Rec. She's worked in the Moxie Community Center for, since that time. Prior to that, she worked 18 years in Russville as the Assistant Director and Director. She is here today. Is she standing yet? It's time to stand, Kathy. And the greatest thing about Kathy is her tremendous work ethic, her creativity, and her desire to be successful. That's why I know that she is the right choice to lead our division, our Cemetery Division towards the future and to continue to meet the standards that the public has and we have for ourselves, for our department and our division. Thank you for the time.
Congratulations. Any comments or questions? Any other thing? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
I have something I want to say, and the mayor ignored me.
I apologize.
This young lady that we just hired, come back up, Mr. Belcher. Did, did we check her out pretty good?
She has, she has been checked up and down, yes, sir. We're very comfortable with her work experience and her background.
Does she have any relatives with the city of Bowling Green?
That we're aware of, no.
She always seemed like a nice lady. I just want to be sure. So you, you all right?
Yes, sir.
She'll be looking after us.
Huh?
She'll be looking after us.
Oh, that's true. All right.
She, she looked like a person to be watching us, too. Okay. Is this my vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
I think that was five yeses. I lost count there. Municipal order 2017-152.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Donald Butler to the Bowling Green Warren County Military Liaison Board.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigien. Dr. Butler's with us, been with us a long time, and is gonna serve on the military board today. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve and your involvement there. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-153.
Municipal Order approving the reappointments of Wethetta Buford, Matt Edwards, and Clay Smalley Jr. to the Human Rights Commission.
I'll move.
Second. Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. This is also a recommendation for reappointments for three of our board members on human rights, and Ms. Wethetta is here with us tonight, and I know Clay was, I caught him early on. I don't think Matt was able to make it with us tonight, but congratulations to each of you. Thank you for your service, we appreciate it. Any comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, thank you again. Municipal Order 2017-154.
Municipal Order approving a contract through cooperative purchase, purchase with John, with Deere and Company of Cary, North Carolina through Wright Implement One LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky under the Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the purchase of four lawn mowers for the Parks and Recreation Department in the total amount of $34,770.12.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Park and Rec Department cuts an amazing amount of grass and right of ways in our community. In order to do that, we need adequate and equipment to cut the grass, so we're here tonight to ask you to allow us to purchase the four lawn mowers off of the state contract. A nice part about it is Wright Implement, a local seller, is on that state price. Brendan's here if you'd like him to articulate where, where we cut, but we need the, need the mowers and it's a good price.
Can I go for the next municipal order as well?
Yeah, we can do that as well. The next one applies to the Public Works Department instead of Park and Rec, and here we, we need to purchase two tractors and a wing, maybe Slim could tell me what that is. Side wing mower, and we're getting a trade-in on one. Mr. Meredith is here if you have any questions about this, but it's again from Wright, Wright Implement of Bowling Green.
I'll answer questions on municipal order 2017-154. Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-155.
Municipal Order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Deere and Company of Cary, North Carolina through Wright Implement One LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky under Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the trade-in and purchase of two tractors and a mower for the Public Works Department in the net amount of $111,965.30.
I'll move.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Is there any further comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-156.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting the purchase of a dump truck equipped with a snowplow and V-Box salter for the Public Works Operations Division under bid number 2017-19 from Gilly Hyde Ford of Glasgow, Kentucky in the total amount of $94,315.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Nash. Mr. Fibo.
We remember back a number of years ago when we had a raft of snow that was plaguing our, our community. At that time, operationally, we didn't have a, a truck and a plow for each zone. We made a commitment back then to move to having a truck, a plow, and salt spreaders in all the zones in our community. We're proud to, as well as new men to run those vehicles, so we're proud to say we're one year away from that, but tonight goes a long way fulfilling that commitment, and we're asking you to allow us to purchase three dump trucks, two snowplows, and what is known as V-Box salters. Greg is here if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2017-41.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way, ordinance approving the closing of two unnamed alleys located between the properties of 400 and 418 Main Avenue West.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by... Perigin. This is an ordinance to close an alley on behalf of the Salvation Army as they continue to expand. Are there any comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2017-42.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.2296 acre from RM3 multifamily residential to RM4 multifamily residential located at 1415 Nutwood Street presently owned by Vulcan Investments LLC.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. This is a first reading on a unanimous vote from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there any comment or questions? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2017-43.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 2.3217 acres from highway business to RM4 multifamily residential located at 800, 900, and 904 Boat Landing Road presently owned by Banks and Patricia Crandall.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. It's a recommending, recommendation from Planning and Zoning with a unanimous vote for rezoning. Is there any comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Before we go to the next set of ordinances, which are two, I just want to make sure that those of you who are here for these, this rezoning hearing understand what we're doing. Generally, the Planning and Zoning Commission only refers a positive recommendation that's heard here at, either for fiscal court or for city commission meeting. This one is a little bit different in that it didn't have a unanimous vote. And either way, I think they voted five times, as a matter of fact, to come up with the six to four that they had. So, in a situation like that, what the city commission does is put a vote, two ordinances there, so we have the option. The first ordinance is a vote to approve rezoning, and that's our process. If you remember from last time, we had a vote for approval on a tie vote, and then the second one was for a denial of the rezoning. So that's what this process is. I don't want you to get confused, or I will explain again before we go to a vote. What we do also is there are three options that the city has. We can simply vote on the record and move on. We can have the parties summarize their, their cases before us, and when there's a question about whether it should be rezoned, that's the option we generally take. The third option is we start over again, re-advertise, and we hold the hearing all over. We've never done that, won't be doing that tonight, I don't expect either, because I don't, haven't heard anybody interested in making that motion. So what we will do is put one of these on the floor, and the two attorneys will come up and make their presentations. If there's any questions or comments from the, from the board to either the attorneys, you'll be, have, have that opportunity to answer those questions, and generally the quester goes first. So has anybody got any questions about our process before we move forward? Okay, the first item we're going to put on the agenda is BG, the first reading of ordinance BG 2017-44.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rejecting recommendation of the City-County Planning Commission and rezoning tracts of land containing 33.8695 acres of, from agriculture to RM3 multifamily residential located at 0 and 1854 Three Springs Road presently owned by the Owens, Owen Sims Estate with GVTP Developments LLC as contract vendee.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. And again, this is our practice. We were hearing the first part of it, which would be to approve the rezoning request. In this case, it's a rejection, so I don't want you to get confused, but the first one we're considering is that the rezoning will be approved. Mark Alcott represents the quester. Mr. Alcott?
I appreciate the opportunity to address you all tonight on behalf of the contract vendee, GVTP. I'll point out that the Owen Sims Estate has separate counsel, Lana Kilgore, who's also here, but we have decided that I will give the summary and presentation in regards to this request for the rezoning.
I think probably somebody else is here with you, I'm sorry.
Lana Kilgore represents the Owen Sims Estate.
I see.
However, we're not both going to speak. I'm going to speak on behalf, and we are both requesting on behalf of our clients that this rezoning be approved as it was presented. This was presented in twofolds, first in June and second in July after two Planning Commission meetings that had quite a bit of input from the community, the people that live next door, people who live on Three Springs Road. And also was molded in regard to a neighborhood meeting that we held before the very first meeting with the Planning Commission to make sure that we could hear some of the issues that people may or may not have with this particular zoning. You may be familiar with this particular piece of property, it's 33 acres, that lays on Three Springs Road on the left as you're going outside of town, and it's immediately before you get to the KOA campground. And so it lies between the KOA campground and the Silver Springs subdivision, and it's those 33 acres that it has a small road frontage in the front, and it has a larger footprint in the back that backs up to I-65. And so this particular parcel in the last two meetings that you had was zoned, or not zoned, was annexed into the city and is now city property, and that's why this is before you tonight to approve this development one way or the other. So, the key issues that came up within the neighborhood meeting and the two Planning Commission meetings were, well, there were three, primarily traffic, drainage, and compatibility. In regard to traffic, there were a lot of questions on what, what's going to happen in regard to Three Springs Road. There's been a lot of development over the years. When I said on city commission, there was a lot of development that was going on up to the city limits and past the city limits where Three Springs Road was being utilized. Three Springs Road is one of the better state roads that we have in our county, and that's why a lot of development has occurred. However, as a result of the development on it, it needs further expansion, and so in the very first Planning Commission meeting, we brought Joe Plunk, the Highway, Chief Highway Engineer for District Three, to say what is proposed to be done. Just last week, he was interviewed with, by Don Sargent in the paper and said that the next phase of $500,000 has been granted for design of this particular project, and it's anticipated, if it's funded, which he anticipates it to be funded, because that's what he testified to, that acquisition, which is the largest piece of that in that article, it's about $12 million, would begin in 2018. And so what that proposal is, and what he explained, is it comes from where Flea Land, it goes to five lanes, it will neck down to three lanes with a turn lane in the middle and one going in each direction. And so that's going to be, it is proposed at this point to go all the way across Natcher and into Long Road, and he anticipates that that will probably be done in two bites. One across the bridge, which they are, has put on the MPO, which was given that bonus points from our local MPO and District Three, and so it's in the top seven projects of this county that will be proposed to the state funding. And so that's anticipated to go with traffic. Now, our traffic study, the biggest significant issue that it showed, because we did the two traffic studies for the two presentations that we had, because we have to do that, to see what impact our development will have on this roadway as a result of our 304 residential units, which will be apartment units on here. And what it says, prior to that happening, the road is already needing a light, traffic light at Small House and Three Springs. Our developers offered to do the traffic light, and the Highway Department said, "We'd rather you not do that, and actually, we're not going to allow you to do that, because our proposal to help the traffic in this situation is to widen the road." And as was put into the article last week, if you saw it, he said, "We are going to put a traffic light in there when we rebuild the road," and so that's what we're going to do, rather than do it piecemeal. The only other traffic recommendations that were made were to put a double-stripe line on Three Springs Road so people weren't passing at our entrance. Also, to align our entrance with the entrance of the tennis courts and air, parking area for Basil Griffin Park across the street, so we had to move our design over. And they also requested us to put a setback of 80 feet, because they need 80 feet for the road expansion and for the drainage expansion that they're doing in that corridor, and so we agreed to all those things, and all those things are in our binding elements and will be required for this development. And so, as a result of that traffic, that's as much as we can do in regard to doing this, and this is, you know, if we stop development on our best roads in our county, we're going to just stop development in general. And so, this is a good corridor, and it's a corridor where people want to live and raise their families. Moving to drainage, there's a significant drainage pattern of about 100 acres or so that flows underneath I-65 across the Owen Sims property and ultimately through a portion of the Silver Springs subdivision, which always has been there since Joe Daniel developed that subdivision 20, 30 years ago. That drainage pattern has always been there, and water's always going to go downhill, and so that's the direction that it goes, and eventually ends up in Three Springs Lake. So, the law requires us not to add any more water going on anybody else's property based upon what we have now, and so we are not allowed to do that. But as a result of the feedback from the, the people next door and the water issues and the pictures that they showed, we went to our professional engineer, Lucas Slavy, who has designed this, and he actually came up with a proposal to divert seven acres of watershed from our land, the Sims land, onto a reservoir that was built, or a pond or a lake, if you looked at the maps, that is approximately seven acres. It has a lot of storage capacity on top of the water table that it has, and Lucas testified that by diverting those, that seven acres of watershed, instead of it having it go through Silver Springs like it is now, it will now go into this holding area and go, be naturally released through the pond, that in a 100-year flood event, it'll divert 830,000 gallons to go underground in the piping that they'll have to design to that retainer area. And that'll cause that pond to be raised six inches or a half a foot. In addition, Lucas had recommended that we raise the birmingham on the low end of the pond, so we can accommodate two 100-year rain events back to back. And so there's lots of storage capacity in that particular pond. That pond actually did not exist before the expansion of the I-65 and Natcher interchange. There was a dewy lake back there that was not on our property. That lake was filled in as a result of that, and a lot of this, this retention area was developed at that time, and that's when that seven-acre pond was developed, when the state expanded that. And so, that was our answer to drainage. Yes, drainage is an issue for any piece of property, but we're not only not going to add to it, which we can't by law, we're going to help the situation. And so that's what we presented with our professional civil engineer. Now, the thing that I think is the most important thing to take is that the proposed development meets every single requirement of the comprehensive plan, which is the 2030 Plan for Warren County, and it meets the FLUM requirements. And you're a commissioner, so you understand what the FLUM means, that the Future Land Use Map. The Future Land Use Map doesn't say that it has to be this, but it cannot be developed anything outside of this criteria, and so this is mixed-use residential. And so that, what that is, is a higher level of density, and in being in the city, you know, we're more dense in a city than we are in a rural environment, and so with that density, we can go up to an RM4, actually, but we're just requesting to go up to an RM3. RM3 allows 24 units per acre to be developed. We are even coming over to half of that threshold. Our dwelling units per acre is 8.98, or exactly right at nine dwelling units an acre, which is less than half. Half would be 12. And so, we aren't maximizing what we can do under this. We are doing what we believe is smart development in regard to this. The other feedback that we've got from the first neighborhood meeting was, one, we have a stub street from Silver Springs that goes right into the Owen Sims property. We do not want to connect to you in any form or fashion. Planning and zoning requires that typically to be done, but they have allowed, based on compatibility, because we have multifamily and single-family side by side, to not make us attached to that stub street, and so it's in our binding element that we will not attach to the substrate. And so, we, our traffic will not be going through Silver Springs in any form or fashion in regard to car traffic and vehicle or traffic. The other thing that helps with compatibility, and you typically see this in a more rural setting, is that, well, we have homes, and we're now, we're going to do a commercial development, or we're going to do more dense populations such as apartments, and we're going to put some birmingham, we're going to put some vegetative screening in. And here, what we showed to the Planning Commission is that we have the best vegetative screening that you could possibly have that's in existence. There are trees there. I don't know what the age of them are, but there are several of them in the, in the fence rows that separate the two properties between Silver Springs, primarily between Silver Springs subdivision and this property, that are larger than I could put my arms around, and they average probably 50 to 60 feet on the entire perimeter of the border. And we put in our binding elements that we will not remove any of those trees in any form or fashion unless a government agency says we have to because of utility cut or something along those lines. In addition, we have put, because most of those trees are deciduous in nature, and so the leaves fall off in the, in the winter. We have required for each lot that backs up to Silver Springs and up to KOA, that you have five evergreens built as a- have five evergreens built as additional screening and buffering between those two. And so, LU113 allows compatibility as long as you do these other things. Compatibility isn't just because you mirror exactly what's across the fence row, it's a combination of many things under the planning comprehensive plan. And so, with that, with no connection to Silver Springs, the existing vegetative buffer, and one of the other things that came up from one of the neighbors that talked to me, when, actually, the very first neighbor that called me when we sent out these letters saying, "We want to get your feedback." So, well, if you put these buildings between my home, which he is in the back to this, and I-65, that's going to create a sound buffer and create some buffering for me for I-65, because this is right on I-65. Now, it's not going to create a buffer for everyone, but it will cause some buffering towards the Three Springs Road area. Finally, the amenities of this were developed significantly from when we started the neighborhood meeting and to we presented to the planning commission, because the planning commission was a little concerned, because there's 36 different lots here. These are proposed to be eight plexes on 34 of them, and two of them in the front will be four plexes. And they, it can be sold to multiple parties, so we could have 36 different owners. And they were concerned that we'd have 36 different apartment plans, designs, and looks, and they wanted more of a uniform appearance in regard to that. And so, we put into our binding elements that it could have only two different sized brick, a queen brick and a regular brick, that were the same color. We could have one roof color, we'd have one trim color, and it'd be approved with what we're calling an owners' association. You're probably very familiar with a homeowners' association or a condo owners' association. And this is almost a hybrid of the two. By creating a significant amenity, which is the water feature, which will be a stocked fishing pond, it's got very low slopes into it, so it's easy to get to and accommodate people. And in regard to that, there's going to be walking trails around it, a pavilion, benches, those things. And so, somebody's got to maintain that. And so, the owners' association is going to maintain that. And we went a step further. The owners' association is also going to do all mowing and all landscaping for every lot in the development. And so, the owners will pay a, a payment for the owners' association to take care of all that. And so, we won't have the problem like we have another homeowner's association, if somebody went mow the yard, and somebody makes a complaint, the homeowner's association, the homeowner's president has to call them, and it's not, that's not going to be an issue here. And so, that added amenity and security of what it's going to look like and preserve those investments for the people that own it is really an enhanced feature. Now, back to some of the comments that were made prior to this coming up, is that the planning commission was very confused when they, when they voted on this. And the first time we voted, it came up with a tie, and then they voted again, and somebody that abstained decided to vote with no additional proof, and so, and with no additional proof, somebody decided to change their vote, which they're entitled to do, but there was no proof at that time. And so, we took the feedback we had, came back again, and again, we ended up with, there was, the first motion was to approve it, it lost. And so, we thought the next vote would lose 6-4 just like that, but it went to deny, and it went to tie. And through my notes, it went to deny, it tied again, then it went to approve, and it lost again by 6-4. So, we had commissioners changing their votes multiple times, and there was multiple times that the chair was saying, "Are you sure you know what you're voting on?" And so, we'd vote again, or they would vote again. And eventually, after the fifth time, which was a lot of confusion, and I'm still not convinced that the vote was accurate, it did get denied and officially in the record as, as a 6 to 4 to deny. And so, that was the recommendation to the city commission. And so, we're asking you to reject that based upon your review of the record and my summary today. And are there any questions that this commission may have as a result of this summary and presentation?
Questions for Mr.?
Mr. Alcott, I am looking at one of your drawings by my good friend Lucas, that I've known for years, had the pleasure of working with. And it's this one.
Yes, sir.
Now, looking at the drawing, if I understand it correctly, is that when I look at Silver Springs, which is in the green to the top of the drawing...
It'd be on the north side, yes.
I would assume that your elevations here pertaining to your proposal here, and the shrubbery that I'm looking at, shrubbery berm, that elevation would be several inches or feet, or whatever the case may be, over and above the Silver Springs elevation of places that are already homes and lots.
You're requesting what the elevation change is. I've got Mr. Slavy here tonight, if you want, and he has actually surveyed the land, but from an actual elevation change, it is not what you would think of as a significant elevation change. Really, the issue we have here is the volume of water that goes through that drainage pattern. It does go through that area, but the elevation change would not be what I would call significant, but it is downgrade in regard to your question.
Okay. So, when I look at the back of some of these Silver Springs property, that elevation of theirs versus the proposed project are going back towards the interstate.
That's correct.
Now, where is on that side, I'm going to come to the other side. On that side, or that end of this proposal, do you have a drop box in that vicinity somewhere?
If you'd hold it up in point, I could probably answer that question. If you'd hold, turn that around...
Oh, I'm sorry. Back in here, the water will be, based on the elevation, coming this way, coming towards the interstate.
Correct.
Where is there a drop box where it go, to, for it to go into the pipe that I assume is coming back that way?
Well, if, if, if you see where the vegetation curve there runs into the interstate, there's a large, right there, there's a large, what I would call box about the size of this podium or so, where water comes from across the interstate underneath. And so, it's coming from that direction across, so it's going from right to left. And so, what Mr. Slavy's recommendation is put the drop box situation, actually, multiple drop boxes in that area, and he has surveyed it and designed where he will put underground piping from that area and pull seven acres off into the pond area, so it actually improve the amount of water that is going through the Silver Springs area. Is that answering your question? There will be multiple drop boxes in, into those areas, pulling the water from where your finger is towards the pond at the bottom of that picture.
Okay. Now, when we get to the pond here, the pond is a certain elevation, it's high point, high elevation. Let's say we have a 100-year rain, and we had one here several years ago, where everything was underwater.
It will have one, yes. And according to Mr. Slavy, we had to prepare for that, and we had to be designed for that. And he actually does over-design for that.
Okay. So, once this pond here gets to a certain elevation, are you going to have a spillway, Lucas, that is going to draw water out of the pond, and where is it going to go?
Is it okay if I have Mr. Slavy answer that question, since he's directing it?
Respond to the question from the questioner, yes. I need to swear in. It, it will overflow toward the KOA property, straight south and run along the interstate. What we've proposed is to build a berm that will handle tw- two 100-year storms back to back. That's our proposal, to handle the water within that pond.
Okay, but it's going to come somewhere, your elevation, your emergency spillway from the pond is going to come back on this side?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
On the 100-year rain, how much water do you anticipate that is going to come through that emergency spillway?
Should be none. We, we're, we're double, doubling up on our berm size to make sure that we can handle two, two 100-year storms back to back. So, one happened one day, and another one happened the other day. We should be holding every bit of it. Now, if we have the third one or a fourth one, we might, I don't know about that, but we, we have doubled our design to accommodate two storms within that pond.
So, let me understand it here. Are you going to have a box here, or is your emergency spillway going to let it flow based on elevation down a drain or something here close to the interstate?
Uh, it probably won't be a box. It would be probably a riprap channel at the top or a concrete channel. We, we'll, we'll run the calculation, see which will better serve it, but it will come toward the interstate and be a sheet flow if it does over top.
Okay. Now, based on what we're saying here, based on elevation, riprap, and emergency spillways, should there be a reason that this water will come back on the campground over here?
Yes, sir. Shouldn't.
What about the elevation coming through here on this property line of theirs and yours in relationship to the property line of the campground?
Uh, we're a little bit higher there, closer to the, I guess, to the west side of that, if that pages north. Uh, it's, the low side is over by the interstate, so it would, it would run out that end. And we can force it to with our berm to make sure that it stays over there in the grass that's out in the state right of way.
Let's go back up here to the top and the Silver Springs development. I had the staff, the planning and zoning staff, to do a little research for me on what were the complaints of Silver Springs development versus what we've got going on now. And it was my understanding, based on the reading and some of the other paperwork pertaining to... Somebody want to say something to me? Let me finish. Based on the paperwork pertaining to that development, or the developments prior to Silver Springs, I should say, I wanted to see what complaints those individuals had when the Silver Springs development was being built. And based on what we found, apparently, there was no complaints on one or two individuals. And is my understanding that the individual in question, the ownership, owned the Silver Springs development too?
I think your question is...
Is Mr. Mills owned the Silver Springs development?
The Owen Sims owns estate, owns this, and honestly, the only property I know that he owned prior that he sold off was he built the KOA campground. And I don't know about the Silver Springs side.
No, I, I, I was just trying to get to the connection. As I remember, there was some connection based on ownership of the Silver Springs property or the campground, so it was the campground.
The only thing I know in regard to the development of Silver Springs, there was a Joe Daniel development. And so, he ended up owning it somehow. I do not know if it was part of the Sims estate, but I know for sure KOA was.
But based on your planning and zoning meeting, the Silver Springs people have some concern about this development, which if I understand it right, based on what we just talked about, the design of this project is to have, one, the watershed, the whole watershed, to go based on the elevation in the opposite direction of touching the Silver Springs owners and their respective properties. Am I right?
He, I believe you said all, and we have designed seven acres that we can do, because there's only so much you can do with gravity. But there's seven acres that is going to be taken off, the watershed that's going now toward Silver Springs is going to be taken away. Mr. Slavy can probably answer that a little more technically than I can.
What's happening, Mr. Danning, there's 100 and, I think it's 120-some acres that comes from the new Plano Road interchange over in that area, and comes across that cornfield, goes through that box culvert, and passes through the Silver Springs. We're going to pull seven acres, we can do it easily by gravity and storm sewer systems, push it to our pond. Now, the remaining, the, the water that's coming there now, less that seven acres, will still continue through there. We'll slow it down. We have two additional ponds in addition to the big pond. They'll be detention ponds, and we'll meter, meter as much water as we can through there, but we'll still have to accept all that upstream water, and it'll still pass through the system. We'll pull as much as we possibly can, and easily pull seven acres off, maybe more when we get to final design, but some of that, it'll still be going through there. We can't take it all. We, the elevations won't allow it.
I'm just concerned, regardless of whose projects they are, that Silver Springs and the other acreage do not receive any more water through the watershed that's already there, or any changes that the development will make to a new watershed that they not receive any more water than what they already receiving. And I don't know that they do and you do based on your... But I want their concerns to be answered, that they will not receive any more water based on this new project than what they already receiving, and nothing we can do about that.
That's correct.
That's already there.
That's correct.
But I don't want them to see, receive any more water.
Yes, and, and they will not. They will pull seven acres out of the equation, 100% of that water, when typically during a normal design, we would, we would only meter out our increase. What we're proposing is to pull it 100% completely out of the equation, not meter, we'll meter that water that's passing through the property, but that seven acres, we'll completely take it out of their watershed and put it in a different spot. So, yes, it will be a...
I follow up with that, Joe?
Yes, ma'am.
How, how is that guaranteed to these folks?
How's it guaranteed?
How do we guarantee that? Is there something, I don't see it in the binding elements, I don't, you know, how is that, you know, it's one thing to stand up here and say that, and I don't mean to challenge it one bit.
No, that's...
But I see some pretty exciting pictures here of, of some pretty serious water issues. And what I think you're saying is you're going to even improve that as a result of this development.
That, that is, that is what we're proposing.
I see heads shaking, no, so, you know...
Well, the, we, we go through, several people check our work. The city checks it, the planning and zoning checks it. There's lots of checks to make sure that our design, and it's, the calculations are pretty simple, and we've been using the same method in Warren County since the 70s, and it's, it's worked, and it continues to work. So, we use, we use that method in our preliminary design, and we went above and beyond that. So, to guarantee it, I would say, you know, we, we're bound by ordinances and Warren, stormwater regulations with Warren County, so we're bound by that. And we, we, what we've proposed at several public hearings is that we would go above and beyond that and pipe twice as, as much as we possibly can into the big pond, because we have a huge reservoir there that we can utilize, but we're, we're limited by grades to some degree. So, we can't, can't pump it up there, it doesn't make, it's not feasible, but we are bound by Warren County's stormwater ordinance that we will have to comply with, or the plans will never get approv- that we will have to comply with, or the plans will never get approved. So, that's the only real guarantee, other than the public comments I've made.
Well, is it my understanding, I don't know legally, Mark, maybe you can answer this, if somebody does a development and puts more water onto my property, I have legal recourse against them?
Of course you do. It doesn't matter if you bring a bulldozer and do something in your backyard and make more water go. You're legally responsible for that damage if you've created any damage. That's, of course, the action. Doesn't matter if you was approved or not, you were approved or not. So, you are correct.
Well, yeah, I know, but being responsible for something and litigating it and then actually paying for it, that's a whole, you have to be able to afford to.
That's from a civil perspective, but as Mr. Slavy said, his design would never get approved by the city or Warren County if they didn't believe it would work.
I just want people that are here that are concerned with this to hear that, that, you know, I'm guaranteeing you, I'm not putting more water on your properties. Actually, I'm proposing to take some of it away.
And if his design, which he probably has more design experience in Warren County water, stormwater, than most any engineer that is in this county, in this area, if his design is not approved, then we can't build it, period, until he gets a design that they believe will work and meets the requirements. Just like building a house. If you don't meet the building codes, you don't get to build it.
Sure. That's not something you would put in the binding elements, or this berm you're talking about, how that might look.
It would be in the detailed development plan, which would be the next stage, yes.
Thank you, Lucas. Thank you.
pertaining to the elevation of the berms versus the other elevations around, is that what you were talking about?
Well, I just, you know, you don't want to put a big berm somewhere, and it's going to be unsightly, and it's going to, you know, take away from the aesthetics of somebody's property, but...
The berm will be completely on this land. It won't be on anyone else's land. And the berm that they're talking about is about one and a half to two feet on the, around the edge of the pond, and it'll be rounded off. And so, it's not like we're building a big wall as tall, you know, as tall as a wall. I mean, it's basically containing water in the pond and doubling the capacity that is required, and that's the way Lucas does work, and that's why we hired him.
Oh, not too long ago, we had a 200-year flood, and that was pretty exciting. Having a back-to-back plan, a 100-year flood one day and a 100-year flood another, how would something like that, like that, you know, everything flooded? My house flooded.
Well, we probably get water from three springs coming across the road and things like that, but he has designed this particular pond to contain it. And so, if we get, like he said, if we get a third one or a fourth one, we're all going to be underwater at that level and we're not going to contain it. But the law says we have to do the 100, and we're doubling it. Any other questions from the commissioners? They've been very good thoughtful questions.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Alcott and Mr. Davenport. And we'll give you an equal amount of time if you need.
I hope I don't need it, Mayor. Good afternoon. My name is Chris Davenport. Happy to be in front of you, Mayor and Commissioners. I represent Denise Castle. She's an adjoining landowner. She lives in Silver Springs. I represented her at the hearing in July. A few points I want to make, and I'll try to be brief, but always be wary of a lawyer who says they will be brief. It's an occupational hazard that we have. The first point I'd like to make to you, though, however, is that Mr. Alcott, when he first started making statements, he started attributing comments to Mr. Plunk that was in our local newspaper last week. He made comments about the first hearing that occurred when this was originally denied by the Planning Commission. And I would want to point out to you, Mayor, as you pointed out, is that the action that the commission is taking is a vote on the record that has been established. That record was established in July. So, the first point of clarification I would want to make is anything that allegedly or we believe happened in June isn't part of the record. Certainly, a newspaper interview is not part of the record, and that is important to me because my client has a right to due process and a right to confront witnesses. Even though this isn't a courtroom, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding where testimony's taken under oath. That's what happens before the Planning Commission, and it's subject to cross-examination. I don't get to cross-examine Joe Plunk when he gives an interview to the paper. I'll tell you that he testified at the first hearing. They did not bring him to the second hearing. So, the only record you have in front of you contains no such statement about a wish list or how soon something's going to be done. I will tell you the testimony before the Planning Commission primarily, and it's in your record, primarily by Mr. Peterson, the executive director, is that we don't know when improvements will be made to Three Springs Road. That's the uncontroverted testimony before that commission. So, it would be improper for me to refer to things that my clients would try to produce evidence-wise. In the meantime, I'm not going to do that, and I would urge you strongly to resist any temptation to base any decision based upon anything other than the record that was rightfully made, and it was a long record. That hearing was a substantial hearing in size. So, that's the first point I'd like to make.
Before you leave that point, do you have any objections to Mr. Slavy clarifying the information on that?
I really don't, Mayor, because I'll say this, that testimony is, and it's a very poignant question, Commissioner Dinning, that you had, and that was developed before the hearing.
Thank you.
So, he testified much, pretty much similar. I think the only thing I would add is if you look at the record, you won't see mention from Lucas about a spillway. The record before the Planning Commission was, there is no contingency because we don't need a contingency. We're going to hold 100% of the water, period, in the paragraph. So, I actually learned something tonight from Mr. Dinning's question, is that that may be not the end of the story, that maybe there are contingencies where that pond, that seven acres, won't be sufficient. But to your point, Mayor, I think that testimony was rather, more or less repetitive, so didn't take issue with that. Let me tell you, let me suggest to you why you should follow the Planning Commission's recommendation. And I want to be very clear about this. Their recommendation was not a tie. Their recommendation was to deny, and that happened twice. I am honored, on a fairly regular basis, to appear before that body. And that body is made up with some very well-tenured commissioners who have seen a lot of applications, who have conducted a lot of hearings. They're guided by very fine counsel, Mr. Moore, and they have a great staff that works with them. I think it's rather unusual for any, either this body or the Warren Fiscal Court, to go against their recommendation. I think just from mathematical review, I think we would all agree that is the exception, not the rule. And in this case, as I said, the recommendation was to deny. I understand that if you read the minutes, there was one commissioner who, every time a motion was made, said no. And as we've seen tonight, sometimes these ordinances, it can be confusing on exactly, are you voting with it or against it, particularly when the motion, if, follow me now, the motion was originally to approve, and the answer was no by that particular commissioner. The next motion was to recommend denial. It's almost like a positive and a negative at the same time. Are you recommending the application? No. You're recommending the denial. Be that as it may, I think all this body can do is look at that record, look at the minutes, and it's a matter at this point, basically law, that the recommendation was six to five denial. The first vote, I think, was six to four denial in June. But to why, I think, and of course, in those minutes, there will be an explanation as to why they voted to deny. And I guess the first point of contention I'll make with Mr. Alcott's presentation is he made a statement to you that all the policies favored recommendation. That simply is not the case. If you look at the recommendation to deny, they cited the policies they felt were out of compliance with the application, chief among them compatibility. I will concede, Mr. Alcott, that the Flume designation would be consistent with the application. That doesn't mean that the evaluation stopped there. It certainly didn't. Let me point out to you what I think the Planning Commission found to be incompatible about the application. The first you've been talking about in rather in-depth, and that is the groundwater situation. Commissioner Perrigen, you've specifically noted the pictures that were introduced and are evidence in the record. Those pictures were taken this spring, not the spring of 2010, the flood year that you're talking about, but this spring. We haven't had that type of flooding this year, but you can see from those pictures, this area of the county is particularly prone to that. Obviously, that's a type of concern that these neighbors have that's very tangible to them because they see that. And they worry not just how the development's going to deal with the water that's coming from across the interstate and going on their properties and going on down across Three Springs Road. They're also worried about the impact that 304 units with their streets and their hundreds of parking spaces will have. Those are very tangible concerns, and we heard a lot of proof about that, and that's in the record. The second thing that was pointed out before the commission is the true density of this project isn't quite what it appears. And what I mean by that is this seven-acre retention area, which doesn't count the area around the pond, that all sits in the far extreme corner from the single-family residences that we're judging compatibility with. From that perspective, this is 304 units really on 26 acres. The pond's far removed, and the density calculation that's performed by the commission staff isn't improper. It's a proper calculation, but from you look, when you look at it from the standpoint of the compatibility of the neighborhood, I'm not really sure how that seven-acre pond that they can't see does anything to diminish the density that's right upon their neighborhood. Third thing the commission heard was that there's no unity in ownership, there's no unity, I would submit, in maintenance, and there's no unity in accountability for this development. Now, as a personal aside, I find that to be a rather extraordinary planning request, at least in our community. A development multifamily of this size that at the outset, at the outset, admits, "We will not own this." These will be 36 individual lots with individual owners that may see, may have differing views of maintenance standards for their building. Now, Mr. Alcott has spoke to green space. He hasn't spoke to parking areas or the buildings themselves and what maintenance standards will be kept for those. He hasn't spoken, this design does not speak to accountability as a whole. For instance, Ms. Perrigen, your point, what happens if the water doesn't work? The answer is, the quick answer is, well, there can be litigation for that. Against whom? What if the neighborhood does flood? We know the water's coming from these 36 lots that potentially have 36 owners. Do you think there'd be any finger pointing among those 36 owners? That's a lack of accountability, and that is a uniqueness to this application when compared with other multifamily applications that routinely come before that body and this body. Now, the last incompatibility thing, I think frankly, from my standpoint, is the biggest. My opinion, may not be the opinion shared by you, may not have been the opinion of the Planning Commission, but that is the traffic mitigation. I don't have the specific policy. I know it's an LU13-something, I'm not sure if it's 1, 2, or 3, but that speaks with regard to compatibility of infrastructure. That's a very specific policy in the comprehensive plan. And the way that body judges infrastructure, particularly traffic, is to the requirement of a traffic study. That was required in this case, that was conducted in this case. And as a result of that traffic study, there were very specific and finite upgrades that was necessary to help mitigate, not eliminate, but at least mitigate the impact of the traffic. They will do essentially none of those. And the question will not be found in a newspaper article. You don't need to look there. You need to look no further than from the record from July and the letter from the State Department of Transportation that says essentially, "If, when we, somewhere years down the road, when we widen this road and we've got to come to you to purchase your property through eminent domain, if you will give us that property, we will waive the traffic improvements today." Now, what does that mean? If I can try to boil that down. It means what saves the state five or six years down the road, the neighbors pay for by way of traffic for the next five or six years. Again, I don't presume to know why the commission turned this down twice, but I have kind of a gut feeling that they may have thought this application may be a good one when those improvements are done, but not on the backs of the neighbors for the next five or six years to save in a condemnation budget. I don't think that's equitable. And that was the proof that was heard. We don't know when the improvements will be made. They haven't been submitted to the General Assembly. That process hasn't even started yet. I'll tell you that once the General Assembly approves a road fund, a project, then they've got to budget it. They got to fund it. Once it's funded, all the properties along the project have to be purchased. I could share with you a handful of condemnation cases. I'll be trying the next six months that have 2013 case numbers on them. Now, think about that. So, these improvements are way off in the future. Again, it may be unique to this case, it may be a lack of my experience, but I'm not aware of another case that's come before the Planning Commission where these types of traffic improvements were required, turning lanes, traffic signals, and they were simply waived off, whether it's through free land or what the case is. So, when you get to compatibility, that is a chief concern. That's not as tangible to these residents because they don't quite understand what the type of traffic counts 304 units will produce and what effect that will have at a roadway, which I'll add. Mr. Alcott says it's one of the best state roads we have. The traffic study says it operates as an E, as in Edward, which is next to F, as in Frank. It gets no worse than Frank. That is without the development. They did not prognosticate what it would be with development because they said, "With the development, you got to make these improvements." So, it may someday be one of the best state roadways we have. It may someday be that. It is not today, and it won't be in the near future. In closing, I'll just say that there are some uniqueness about this case, the fact that they're proposing 36 lots owned by 36 different owners, presumably, the fact that you've got a traffic study that's essentially been overlooked for budgetary concerns. Now, the other excuses that were given about, again, what Mr. Plunk allegedly said in a newspaper article, not in this record. They did not bring him to this commission to testify and subject him to cross-examination. You have the record that you have. Those are all peculiarities. I'll add to that the peculiarity that what started as a county zoning has brought me before you, that this has been annexed in the meantime. I'm not sure that makes any difference. That's what the applicant and the owner have done, but I do find that to be a peculiarity. The last peculiarity is that although that the Planning Commission voted to deny this, your first vote tonight will be whether to approve it. I'll add, Commissioners, you know this, just because you vote yes on a motion, at least a first and second, just because you make the first and you make the second, doesn't mean that you have to vote yes on the motion itself. So, you vote yes to bring it to the floor. We have a discussion. All five of you can still vote yes or no. If you elect to follow the recommendation of your commission, you would vote no to the current motion that's on the floor. And for all the reasons and for other reasons that the commission may have voted the way they do, I would urge and request you do that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alcott. Did you have a question?
Could I have just a brief rebuttal in regard to the statement in regard to traffic? It's up to the commission because some of the statements he made were...
I'm going to say that Mr. Davenport is correct. If you're going to refer to something that's not in the record, we can't consider that.
I'm not referring to anything but in the record, and what he's stated to you in his summary is not accurate. summary is not accurate, is what I'm trying to rebut. Just the two last binding elements. He stated in his summary that we were doing nothing. And the answer is, we offered to do everything, and in our binding elements, number 12 and 13, it says, "The developer will install a stop sign at the entrance in Three Springs Road and maintain intersection corner sight distances as close as possible to 450 feet or more, looking both directions on Three Springs Road from a stop position for the entrance. The developer will install left-through lane, right-turn lane from the development line, the development entrance with Basil Griffin Park entrance across from Three Springs Road." It's required. We offered to do the traffic light, and it's in the record that they told us they would not allow us to do the traffic light because what they were doing. And that is in the record on both hearings. And so, that's the rebuttal, is that they say we are doing nothing, and we're doing everything and have offered to do everything, but we're doing everything that they'll let us do. And so, that's the only rebuttal.
Can I make a...
I'm sorry.
Can I ask somebody something? Or are we...
What's your question?
I want to know if the HOA is going to be accountable. I mean, is the HOA required to have some sort of insurance or some, you know, the point is if the water runoff and floods somebody's property, who's responsible? One of...
According to the binding elements, the developer is responsible for the entire development until 50% of the lots have been built upon, not just sold, which is a big difference. And so, 50% of these will be built upon, the developer is responsible. At that time, according to this, it'll go to the Owners Association for responsibility, and that is what was testified at the hearing, that'll be a deed restriction and that the Owners Association will require all landowners to be in compliance.
Hey, so, I'm not sure that the answer to the question of if I get flooded, where do I go?
Well, first, ultimately, you would go to the people approved the permit because they approved the permit for the flooding. As you see in any flooding situation like what we've seen with hurricanes and that type of thing, there's not any water structure that's going to keep all flooding from ever happening. But all flooding that can be controlled and within the guidelines and construction is going to be approved not only by our engineers, but approved and permitted by the engineers of the county and the city. And so, ultimately, they're responsible, just like any building inspector is responsible when they approve a building, that it meets all the code. And so, ultimately, that's the first line of defense. The second line of defense would be the landowners themselves. And it was testified that this particular development is going to have nine original landowners. It won't be like that for the rest of time, but that's the way it will be started, and we'll know immediately how this will develop. And so, the what ifs are in regard to the protections that are there for our entire community, not just this location.
Can I ask one other? I'm sorry, Bruce.
As long as it's on the record.
I think it is. Well, it may not be. So, somebody mentioned the pond, the seven acres of the pond taking away from the acreage of the development and changing the density number. Do we know what the density number is without the seven-acre pond? You can't build on a pond.
I have not done that calculation, but if you look at any application to planning and zoning, they really want you to have green space and common area space. They promote that rather than going wall-to-wall-to-wall. Now, we can't build on top of water, but the answer is, we're way below the DU in regard to the 24 units per acre and...
Even if you took the pond out, you're still below...
Yeah, we're below half, and we're only taking seven acres out. And so, we'd have to take over half of it away for us to double to 18. So, we'd have to be on half the land to double to 18 units per acre, is the short math.
Davenport, you had a comment?
Just very briefly, Mr. Alcott is correct that of the traffic study, there were a couple of things that were agreed to that they say they're going to do, primarily keeping the right-of-way clean. That's what Mark referred to. Before the planning commission, I made this analogy. It's kind of like my son tells me for Christmas that he wants a toothbrush, a pair of socks, and an iPad, and I get him the socks and the toothbrush, and I say, "I gave you most of what you want." They're not doing the traffic light, and they're not doing the turning lanes. Now, I will dispute with Mr. Alcott whether there was testimony about that. He made the statement, he did, that the state has said they don't want them to do those. That's not what the letter from Mr. Plunk says, and he wasn't there to offer that testimony. So, that's a real contention of fact that I have with regard to whether the state would really say, "Well, we're not going to let you pay for that turn lane and for that traffic signal," because that's contrary to the record that was produced. One last thing, if I may, Mayor. If you're in opposition to this and did come tonight, would you please raise your hand? I appreciate your time, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions?
Free question from Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore, come on up. That was number three that was at the meeting, not number two. His son was...
Yes. My question pertains to the Owners Association. When I served previously on the City Commission, the administration at planning and zoning was different, but at that time, I was educated that neither the planning commission nor the City Commission had the ability to enforce rules or governance over a homeowners association. Has that changed?
Not really, Commissioner. Now, the one thing that can happen that can change that is to include the details of how that HOA is created and lives and breathes and collects dues in the binding elements. So, that's one way to beef up those requirements. But you're right that HOA's, the duty of the HOA to maintain common space, it falls outside the code enforcement process. In fact, Mr. Harmon and I have been talking about that this week, and I suspect the reason we're talking about it is because you all have been talking about other HOAs that are not functioning. So, that's a common problem.
So, one of the things that I understood to be true is that if the Owners Association requirements were put into the binding elements, which would make that Owners Association different than an average Owners Association, that there was enforceability from planning and zoning. But what I hear from you standing here now is that's not the case.
No, that is the case, that if those requirements are put into the binding elements, then they can be enforced as a part of the code enforcement process. In this particular case, the applicant has agreed to create a homeowners association and that the developer will continue to maintain the common areas for so long, I think, as 50% of the lots remain unbuilt upon. So, that's a good framework, but making, taking it further than that requires more specificity in order to enforce it before code enforcement, but it can be done. Mr. Alcott has handed to me binding element number 10 that says, "All common open space shall be maintained by the developer until 50% of all lots have been built upon, at which time the developer has the option to transfer maintenance responsibilities for common open space to the Owners Association."
And so, I have that in front of me, and I'm reading it, but is there enforceability of that once it transfers to the Owners Association?
The only thing this binding element says is that the HOA will be created, but it doesn't go any further than that.
Can the binding elements be amended?
The elements can be amended. Binding element number eight also enumerates the obligations of the HOA to have mandatory membership, maintain and upkeep every lot and common space with mowing landscaping ponds, water retention areas, recreation areas, trails, and connectors. Developers shall be responsible for the construction of the recreational areas and walking trails surrounding the existing pond. So, if it doesn't get mowed, then the HOA has that obligation in these binding elements and can be then cited by the Code Enforcement Board for enforcement. If the pond overflows, again, that's specified as an item that is subject to enforcement before the Code Enforcement Board. If the HOA exists, if the HOA has collected its dues, if the HOA has purchased insurance, they're just a lot of...
And those ifs are not in there, is what I hear you saying.
You hear me correctly.
Thank you. So, just so we all understand what's going on, there are two ordinances on the agenda. The one that's on the floor is to deny the recommendation. So, the one on the floor is approving the proposed zoning map amendment conditioned with and, or excuse me, together with and conditioned upon the general development plan based on the testimony and documents presented at the planning and zoning hearing and summary today. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the following objective and action items, LU-1, excuse me, 1.1.1, LU-1.1.2, LU-1.1.3, and/or TR-2.1. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. So, we're now prepared to vote, and when we call the roll, a yes vote is to approve the rezoning request. It's different than most other items that come before the City Commission. We vote yes or no, and it lives or dies based on that. This one, if it doesn't pass, then we move to the next amendment or next ordinance, which is a vote to deny the rezoning, and one of those two will have to stand. But this vote, a yes vote, is to approve the rezoning.
Yes, sir. Make one comment, if I may.
Yes, sir.
You call me out of order if I am. I know you will.
I think we start there, don't we?
We generally, yeah. I generally, as a general rule, I have objections to voting on a first reading of an ordinance. By law, an ordinance has to be read twice and voted on once. And so, a vote that is taken this evening is not binding. There's nothing that's binding to it. It's the second vote that counts. And I see a lot of confused looks out there, like I'm muddying the water, and I don't intend to be muddying the water, but I qualify that because I am going to cast a vote this evening up or down on the issue. But I have additional questions that I need to have answered, and I need to go back and dig into the record to look at those. And so, my vote is qualified with, it could possibly change, and it could for anybody up here. I only say it because generally, that is not what happens. But because I have some questions that remain unanswered, that I feel like I personally need to dig into to find out, to have resolution to those, I want to qualify my vote this evening.
And you brought up one point. I would remind the commissioners that no matter the summary that you heard tonight was not testimony and not to be considered as part of your vote, your vote is based on the record. We'll tell the audience, I watched it twice, I watched the vote four times, I still don't think the commission knew what they were doing at the end. When you vote five times, the whole room was confused, I thought, which is the reason why we're voting here tonight. Now, again, when I call the roll, a yes vote is to approve the rezoning request. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Being a yes vote on this one will mean that the vote on the next one will not be taken, and if it dies the second time, we'll place that one, if it doesn't pass on the second reading, we'll put that one back on the agenda again, and it'll be the first reading to deny.
So, you don't want to have a first reading on this ordinance 45, you want to hold that one in abeyance?
Correct.
All right.
Right.
Have to have a vote to do that?
As long as there's no objections, no.
Okay.
I'll, if you don't mind, we'll give ourselves about a five-minute break and allow the crowd to disperse if they don't want to stay for the remainder of the meeting. So, we'll take a short break. Okay, we'll return to the meeting after a short break, and we're at municipal order 2017-157.
Municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the update of area designation form to be included in the Warren County Area Solid Waste Management Plan 2018 through 2022.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Williams. Mr. DeFabo. Thank you, Mayor. As we all remember, we in Warren County have a solid waste management plan that's managed by the county, particularly Stan Reagan. They have to make ministerial changes to that as well as changes in rate. Stan tells us this year that amendments to the plan are mostly ministerial and don't involve any changes of rates. Stan is not here, so I'll go by what his memo says.
Comment your questions. Call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2017-158.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a 2017 grant from the Kentucky 911 Services Board for 911 system upgrades in the amount of $245,000.
No move.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Nash. Mr. DeFabo. Thank you, Mayor. As the commission knows and the public should know, we operate the 911 center. We try to maintain the integrity of that system by having it always be compliant with changes in communication, telephone, cell phones. We received this grant tonight to make some changes, and I thought it'd be important for Doug to come up and briefly give you an overview of those changes and how we're going to use the $245,000.
Good evening, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. DeFabo, mayor and commission. As you may or may not know, the Bowling Green Police Department operates as the county's single answering point for the 911, for all 911 phone calls, city and county-wide, with very, very few exceptions. And so, it's important for us to maintain the quality and the functionality of our equipment. The equipment that we now have is getting some age on it. It is end of life in terms of the hardware we have. It's also using some, the communication network, as I'm told by AT&amp;T, it's using an antiquated form of that communication between all of our pieces of equipment. What we are proposing to do is upgrade that equipment. There is a standard now called Next Gen in the 911 system. It encourages additional functionality in the equipment. There is a grant, as we know, that is available to partially fund this project. We have 12 workstations that need updating. We would update all of those in this project. The grant would cover funding for seven of those, 12. The city would cover the funding for the extra five of those positions, add at the Greenwood Backup Center. I can't, frankly, I'm not intelligent enough to know all of the distinct upgrades and functionality, but there will be improvement in redundancy. There are two vendors that are currently on state contract, and we anticipate those to continue to be on state contract, that provide hardware for the system. AT&amp;T is the communication service provider behind that equipment for either one that we would go with. But it does improve redundancy because AT&amp;T has now built a two-node redundant system with a processing facility in the eastern part of the state, a processing center in the western part of the state, and if one of those were to fail, the other would pick up the slack. And so, they have built in redundancy to that system. A lot of agencies are using that AT&amp;T network now to manage their 911 calls. The hardware and the software behind all of that will allow us to make some improvements. We will not do it immediately, but the system does have the capability of accepting text, 911 texting that requires some additional expenditure to make that... 911 texting that requires some additional expenditure to make that function applicable, but we can and probably will do that at some point in the near future, which will allow people to be able to communicate with our dispatch via text without making a direct phone call. So that is one of the new features of the Next Gen 911 technology. So we think we're going to have newer, better, more reliable, more functional equipment with this upgrade and with this changeover, and obviously, we're reaching end of life with some of our equipment now, so it's appropriate for us to spend this money, and we're just thankful that the state has seen fit to help us fund part of this project.
And accepting this and moving forward with it, it will save us about six thousand dollars a month in maintenance fees? Did I read that correctly?
Well, there's phone line expenses. And to answer your question in short, yes, we will save a significant portion of our phone line expense, and I wish I could tell you why, but the system, the phone lines themselves, the T, I don't know what they are. I wish I was more technically savvy on the phone stuff. But we're paying about twelve thousand dollars a month for our AT&amp;T phone service for our 911 system. That will be cut in about half once we upgrade to this new system and the new communication network that AT&amp;T has in place. So there will be an ongoing savings, which, if you do the math, probably the return on investments, it's fairly quick at six thousand dollars a month of savings.
Comment, your questions?
There's probably T1s or T3s.
Would have to take your word for it. T1 sounds right, though.
A good thing.
Yes.
Comments? Call the roll. Thank you.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order two thousand seventeen one fifty-nine.
Municipal order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Greystone subdivision, sections eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Williams. Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. Items number twenty and twenty-one are in the same family. It occurs when a developer finishes agreed-upon improvements to a subdivision, and we take it into the city's domain. Item twenty is we're taking Greystone, sections eleven, twelve, and thirteen, the final sections, into the city's domain, adding about three thousand linear feet of roadway. Item number twenty-one, I know you'll vote separately, involves us taking nine hundred and eighteen new roadway in Molly Court into our domain. Greg Merrith is here. If you have any questions?
Questions or comments?
Only one. I only see roadway. Are there sidewalks?
There are sidewalks. Within the city, there's a requirement, a requirement to build sidewalks, also storm sewers, curb and gutter, any appurtenances that go along with that.
I apologize. I missed it. I was a few lines down. And with regards to the sidewalks, they are all one hundred percent completed?
Yes, they are before we accept, yes.
Okay. Few years back, we got into where we were accepting them, and they weren't one hundred percent completed, but these are one hundred percent completed. Very well. Thank you. I understand.
Other comments?
I'm still going to ask.
Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order two thousand seventeen one sixty.
Municipal order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Molly Court in the Leon, Tarter, and Garland Reeves subdivision.
Second.
By Dunning, second by Paragon. You heard Mr. DeFabo's explanation. Are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Next item is municipal order two thousand seventeen one sixty-one.
Municipal order approving the filing of a civil action by Keating, Muthing, and Klemkamp, PLLC, or PLO, related to the Block Six rap in the WKU gateway to downtown Bowling Green area development.
No move.
Motion by Paragon, second by me. The Commission engaged in a closed session to discuss the pros and cons of moving forward with this and placed it on the agenda for consideration tonight. Any further comments or questions? Yes, sir.
This evening on this, this is an important issue for the city and an important, very important issue for the taxpayers, too, I believe. And my vote tonight will be no. And I want to explain why that will be. I believe that this issue has been aggressively investigated for two years. It's been investigated by private attorneys, the state auditor, the Attorney General, the Commonwealth attorney, and the FBI. In that two years, we've had conflicting reports on whether or not the city can successfully win any kind of litigation. There's no question that mistakes were made related to this project. But my responsibility, I believe, as a City Commissioner, is to determine whether or not there are appropriate expenditures being made by the city in relation to an item like this. I do not believe that we will prevail in collecting any money, but yet this action that we're going, that will be authorized tonight, I believe, at a conservative estimate, is going to cost us an additional one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars over the already one hundred and two thousand dollars that we've spent. I do not believe that this is a fiscally responsible action. I believe that pursuing this action hampers the progress being made downtown, again, without much hope of there, of collecting any money. If I thought that money could be collected, my focus would be different. But since I don't believe that money can be collected, my sole focus in this case needs to be on ensuring that downtown continues to grow and continues to prosper. And I believe locking something up in a legal, prolonged legal battle hampers our redevelopment efforts. In the end, I think it is fiscally irresponsible to pursue this matter at this time, and I will be voting no. I yield the floor.
Comments, your questions? Call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
No.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we have a public comments section available. If there's anyone that'd like to make a public comment, invite you to the floor at this time. Please give us your name and address.
Dr. Janice Bunch, and the address is box one, two, five, Bowling Green. I'll try to make it brief. The hour is late, but have you all been on Reservoir Hill recently? If you are coming out of the Neighborhood and Community Services building and you look towards the water tower, you will be treated to a large amount of weeds and overgrown plant material. Occasionally, I think that they've gone through and tried to spray it, so you get these very large clumps of brown-black gunk. Some of those weeds are up above the chain link fence and the barbed wire extension. So I'm estimating that's about six to eight feet for the weed growth. Can you explain that? Also, if you go out the back door of the Neighborhood and Community Services, you'll also see a lot of overgrown areas. And I think that the city needs to be a better example to the citizens of the city. Also, there are a lot of other areas, right-of-ways, where there's a lot of overgrowth that's not been addressed. Now, in some cities and some areas, they have wildflower programs where they put wildflowers out so they don't have to mow, and it will look pretty also. I would like for the city to look into some sort of wildflower program or some butterfly gardens. I think that that would be a great addition to this city. I did talk to an extension agent with the UK who is very interested in native plants, and you might want to ask her to come do a presentation regarding native plants or wildflowers, butterfly gardens. The pollinators are in decline. Our monarch butterflies may not make it if we do not provide more habitat for them. We need to also have habitat for the hummingbirds and the honeybees. If we do not have honeybees, we will not have food. It's very important that the honeybees have habitat. Thank you for your consideration. Please look into it.
Is there anyone else? Chris Polster?
Yes, good evening. My name is Vince Bolton. I live at eighty-six Sterling Way in Bowling Green. Good evening, Mayor Wilkinson and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this topic, making a business case for LGBT fairness in Bowling Green. First, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I came out in the early twenties in college. I'm the youngest of nine children in a loving Catholic family. I had a long-term relationship for twenty-six years, and after unexpectedly becoming a widow, I met a man from Bowling Green who I later married over three years ago. But at the time, we had to travel back to Maryland to make it legal before nationwide marriage equality existed. I've lived in many other states in my life, many of them more progressive than Bowling Green and Kentucky. And even though we have marriage equality, we still have sought legal protection through wills, advanced directives, power of attorney, for those things that marriage equality does not bring full parity as it does for straight couples. But here are my reasons I propose of why you would want to promote LGBT equality. One, it's an incentive to tourism. It would promote Bowling Green as a fair-minded and progressive city like Kentucky's two largest cities of Louisville and Lexington. Two, it's an incentive for business travel. Currently, the California Attorney General has issued a ban on several southern states, including Kentucky, based on recent Senate Bill seventeen. And even though cities like Louisville and Lexington have asked it to be removed, the decision remains at a state level. Louisville's fairness campaign responded. This could have indirect repercussions on the LGBT community in one of the nation's more gay-friendly cities. Just look at the effects of the North Carolina bathroom bill and loss of significant revenue just from sporting and concert events alone that have boycotted their state. There's also incentives to local and small businesses. Now, with nationwide marriage equality, more people are getting married, and there's money and revenue to be generated from catering hotels and entertainment. Employers, even some of the Fortune one hundred companies, do not offer domestic partner benefits to their employees. I refer to the Human Rights Campaign Annual Equality Index. For example, Fruit of the Loom is not on the list. However, GMC is, and they ranked at a hundred percent. Another HRC index is the Municipality Equality Index, in which Bowling Green is only ranked at seventeen, that's one seven, out of one hundred, whereas Lexington and Louisville are both at seventy-one. Even Nashville, Tennessee, has a total score of sixty. Corporate social responsibility has become an imperative for successful businesses. In HRC's The Buying for Workplace Equality website, it provides an accurate view of a business's workplace policies towards LGBT employees. Remember that consumers vote with their purchase power. Just look at the backlash from LGBTs towards Chick-fil-A and Hobby Lobby.
Sorry, sir, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments. Was anyone else? All right, that'll be the end of the meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is September fifth, two thousand seventeen. Thanks for tuning in.